Ladies and gentlemen, thank you. We're going to call this July 1st, 2025 meeting of the Greenwood County Council. We appreciate you all. We appreciate you all being here tonight. Your Greenwood County Council has been in an executive session since 4:00 PM this afternoon. I'll ask the county attorney, Ms. Carson Penny, please tell the public why.
We were at executive session for three reasons. One legal reason regarding Greenwood County ordinance 5-2-9. One economic development reason regarding Project Kingfisher. And a discussion of compensation in the department's Public Works, Parks and Recreation, the Sheriff's Office, and Facilities Maintenance.
Thank you. Counsel, I should have asked for a motion first. Go ahead, the executive.
Make a motion when we exit the executive session, Chairman.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
We have one.
One item, one item coming out of that session.
And I would like to make a motion if we, that we moved that Greenwood County Council authorized staff to negotiate and execute engagement with Maynard Nexon to represent the county with respect to certain aspects of Project Kingfisher. That's my motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second on that, please?
Second.
Motion second. All in favor as presented. And that is so ordered. Thank you. Counsel, I trust that you've all had an opportunity to review your minutes from the last meeting in this so long. We're going to pass a motion. Do we accept those minutes? Place them into the record, please.
So.
Motion, Ms. Clinton. Second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Griffin. All in favor? That is so ordered. Thank you. This evening, we have some people signed up, I think.
In the kitchen.
Oh, sorry. Need to pray. Hope Jesus forgives me. As we always, as we always begin our meetings, I'm sorry for that. We got a lot of stuff in front of us tonight, folks. Ms. Phil, I believe you have the indication tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's my pleasure to introduce Dr. Toby Frost, Senior Pastor at South Main Street Baptist Church. On his approaching, I would like to say that this past Sunday, we had a wonderful event at the church. It was the annual celebration of God and country. And I would estimate Reverend probably 500 people in attendance from all over the community. And also the week prior to that, the church hosted a summer kids camp with over 250 children in attendance. So thank you so much for being here.
Thank you, Kathy. And tonight, we have 40 to 50 recovering addicts at our men's meeting, which I'll be going to right after this. A lot of life change and great churches in Greenwood County. Let's pray. Lord, we do have our agendas for life and for meetings, but we know that you have your agenda as well. We pray for your agenda, for our lives, for the time that we spend, for the business that we transact. We know that you have all wisdom, you have all knowledge, and so I thank you for a county council that yields to you in prayer. We just thank you for the sacrifices that they make to do work on behalf of our county. And I pray for their collegiality. I pray for their relationships. I pray that everything they do would be not out of partisan concerns, but out of just what's good for our, for our citizens, for our county. And I thank you that they have that desire as well. We thank you in advance by faith for how you're going to lead, how you're going to guide, and how you're going to direct. We know that the machinations and complexities of county government are great. But we know that you make all things beautiful, Lord, in your time. And so we just yield this time, Lord, to you. And again, we thank you in advance by faith for how you're going to work and what you're going to do. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Reverend Frost. If you would join us, please, now in honoring your nation, we pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. McIntyre, we have, how many people signed up?
They're signed up.
Resigned up.
Yes, sir.
So before we enter into public comment, I know, I think that this discussion is in regard to planning this zoning issue, I think. Carol, Carol, why don't you come up and just tell us kind of the status of that right now, and it may stop people a little while, not needing to talk quite as long?
Sure. Mr. Chairman, thank you. This is a case that we have. It's out on 25 North or Montague Avenue Extension. It's at the LaPorte Community, if you're familiar with that. And the request is for rezoning from R1, which is single-family residential, to C2, which is general commercial or highway commercial. It's a single lot that was part of the original plan for LaPorte Community. And right now, the only thing you can do on it is residential. And the applicants stated in their application that they may want to have a food truck out there. There are a couple of things that are extenuating circumstances. Number one, there are deed restrictions associated with LaPorte. I'm not sure on the history of their enforcement, but they are written into all of the deeds that you cannot have any commercial uses. You can't have manufactured homes. You can't have farm animals or anything along those lines. So the typical things that you would expect to see from a residential. Planning staff recommended disapproval and Planning Commission recommended unanimously to deny. So that's, that was the recommendation coming forward.
Thank you. So for those of you who signed up to speak, you certainly have the right to speak on this own agenda, and you are welcome to speak. However, having heard what Ms. Carol just presented to us, it was unanimously voted, lack of approval by the planning zoning board. If you do care to speak on this, and of course, there will be a public hearing on second reading, where you could also speak. But if you care to speak on this tonight, come forward, state your name and address for the record to do so.
My name is Laura Root, so I would like to speak on it. I will give the attendance.
Good to see you, Laura. Thank you.
What's your address?
2629 Montague Avenue Extension, Greenwood, South Carolina. I have the property directly across the street from the 102 LaPorte. So I'm nervous. I'm reading this.
That's all right. You and I have talked on the phone several nights.
Yes, we have.
Go ahead. No need to be nervous.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I come before on behalf of myself, my family, and my neighbors and residents who deeply approach the proposed rezoning of 102 LaPorte Drive from residential to commercial use for the purpose of food truck sales. This neighborhood is not just a place on the map. It's a longstanding, multi-generational, close-knit community. It is a quiet, dead-end street with no outlet. The proposal to bring in a commercial business would fundamentally disrupt everything this community represents and set a dangerous precedent for the surrounding residential areas. LaPorte Drive connects directly to a four-lane highway with a posted speed limit of 55 miles per hour in both directions. That alone introduces serious concerns. Increased traffic volume and new turning movements in and out of this proposed business will only exacerbate the already risky area. This corridor has seen a high volume of accidents, and our families should not have to avoid accidents. And data tells us more traffic and more unpredictably lead to more crashes. That is not a risk our families should have to absorb. And given the dead-end nature of our street, it is inevitable that visits unfamiliar with the area will use personal driveways and yards to turn around or park, creating intrusion, safety hazards, and damage to nearby property. Beyond traffic, this rezoning brings the threat of long-term noise, litter, light pollution, and daily disruption. Food truck sales aren't passive. They draw on a consistent string of vehicles and customers from outside the area, none of whom are invested in LaPorte Drive community's well-being. The potential for loitering, trash, and disturbance is very real. We are not opposed to small businesses, but this location is simply not the place. And let's be clear, this property is surrounded entirely by residential homes. There is no history of commercial use, commercial use on the street. Rezoning would set a dangerous precedent, one that invites further commercial encroachment into peaceful residential areas. We cannot allow one private property's profit to override the share rights and quality of life of dozens of families. We organized, we organized quickly but thoroughly. Our petition already includes 81 signatures, and support continues to grow. That alone speaks volumes about the collective voice of the community. This isn't just a small group. It's a wide, passionate, and well-informed resistance. In closing, I want to acknowledge that many of us have been unable to attend every council meeting regarding this rezoning hearing, not due to lack of care, but because of unavoidable life events, jobs, health, and family responsibilities. But let me assure you, our level of involvement, of involvement is unwavering. Our commitment to protecting our homes, our safety, and our neighborhood will not fade. We respectfully ask that you deny this rezoning request. Please help us preserve the community that generations before us, that, that we call home. Thank you for your time and your public service.
Thank you, Ms. Laura. Appreciate you being here. And actually, you have attended every council member, council meeting, because this was personal. I know when we spoke, you couldn't attend the planning and zoning meeting, but I did attend the planning and zoning.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Okay. Anyone else here that would like to speak?
Hello, everyone. I'll make it real short. I don't have a fair statement.
Name and address, please.
I'm sorry. My name is Guy Coleman at 105 LaPorte Drive.
Thank you, sir.
And if you look out our dining room window, front porch anywhere, you see the property that they're asking to be rezoned. My mother and father moved to that neighborhood 45 years ago. My father passed yesterday. It was my 50th anniversary of his death. My mother would like to remain in her home and stay in the home that they chose to be their forever home. And I'm trying to do everything that I can to be sure that she does. There's something I did bring up in the last one. I challenge anyone on crime rate. Where else in the county can you go and pull up reports for a neighborhood or a community and see a zero crime rate? You'll see it in our community. The last time anything ever happened was, I know, over 20 years ago. We have a very safe, transgenerational neighborhood. We even have fourth generation in one home. So this speaks a lot. For the members that haven't visited out there yet, I know Mr. Lane has. Please drive by there and take a look at it before the next meeting. And you'll understand more, you know, than you do just seeing it on the map. But that's about all I can think of. Please go over Ms. Coleman's report real good. She did a fantastic job on it. And we thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Coleman. We appreciate you.
Stay safe and fortunate.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else care to speak?
My name is Aaron Root, wife of Lord, husband of Lord. At 2629 Montague Avenue Extension, adjacent to 102 LaPorte Drive. First off, Stephen, I want to thank you for your time and your dedication to protecting the integrity, safety, and peace of our community in Greenwood County. I also want to thank Carol Coleman again for her findings and for stating clearly that this proposed zoning does not align with the future land use plan for Greenwood County. Her diligence and transparency have given residents like myself the tools to better understand the process and to be able to speak up for what is right for our neighborhoods. The area surrounding 102 LaPorte Drive is an established residential neighborhood, and improving this rezoning to C2 commercial will directly impact the quality of life for all residents. We chose to live in this area because it's own residential. It's quiet and family-friendly. Introducing commercial zoning brings with it increased traffic, noise, light pollution, and safety concerns. These changes would drastically alter the character of our neighborhood. Additionally, I want to emphasize that this rezoning goes against existing covenant and deed restrictions that date back to 1961. Listed within these covenants and deed restrictions, first off, the property involved in this subdivision is for residential purposes only. The historical context reaffirms a longstanding vision and intention for this community. We understand the need for corruption growth in Greenwood County. However, there are already designated commercial corridors and vacant commercial properties available without intruding into residential home zones. Allowing businesses to invade established neighborhoods is not only unnecessary, it is unfair to residents who have invested their lives, families, and finances in these homes. Furthermore, approving this rezoning would set a dangerous precedent. Once one residential property is converted to commercial use, it opens the door for further encroachment. Over time, the variation of our neighborhood could be permanently changed, impacting property values and diminishing the sense of community that has been built here for decades. Once again, thank you, County Council, for your time and consideration, and thank you to Plankberry Carol Coleman for your guidance and ensuring that resident voices are heard and supported by clear and factual findings. I urge you to please vote to deny the proposed rezoning of 102 LaPorte to protect the integrity, safety, and vision of our neighborhood for generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Aaron. Thank you for being with us. That concludes the presentations from this evening. We'll move into old business, please. Item A, under old business is consideration of the appointment to the Library Board of Trustees. Ms. McIntyre, you have that information for us.
I do. So this is for District Four, and Kathy submitted a nominee, Jenny Gast. You'll see her bio in your packet, and it's up to you to recommend approval.
No one here else to speak on that tonight?
We need to.
Miss Gast is not here tonight, I don't guess. Counsel, you've heard the recommendation for a performance of the Library Board. What is your pleasure?
Motion to accept, please.
Our second.
I have a motion by Ms. Miller, second by Ms. Bishop. All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you very much. Item B, ordinance 202514 to amend Greenwood County zoning map as and if amended so that one parcel of land totaling approximately 9.75 acres at 301 Mosley Road, Greenwood County, South Carolina, changes from forest agriculture to RDD rural development. Ms. Carol Coleman, please.
Mr. Chairman, just as a quick overview, as you said, it's 9.75 acres of land. You can see it on the map there. It is currently FA, and this was part of a comprehensive zoning that the community around Calistin Highway did years ago. It's not that far from the RDD zoning, which is what it was before the zoning change. The issue that the family has is they would like to split up the land for family members to have two homes on it. The minimum lot area in forest agriculture is five acres. So they have 9.75 acres, which means they don't have enough to subdivide. So they came to us and requested to go to the RDD so that they could create one, maybe two home sites in addition to the, to the mother that lives on the property. Planning Commission recommended approval, and staff recommended approval as well.
Thank you, Carol. Counsel, you will recall that they have 10 acres, almost 10 acres land, more than others in the area that they own and want to occupy with the family. So this third and final reading, counsel, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I offer you a motion to approve.
Second, awesome. Motion to approve. Second by who?
Ms. Griffin.
Ms. Griffin. All in favor?
Well, just quickly, I just want to make sure that y'all understand that there have been just technical edits to this, nothing of substance. So you have in front of you an amended motion, but again, just technical edits, nothing substantive.
And let me go ahead and say now, thank you, Attorney, that that's going to be the case on the next two matters that we hear behind this one. And it's language on it. Language on it. Correct. Anything else we know, need to know about that, Madam Attorney?
No, sir.
Okay. So we'll be voting then on the, on the amended ordinance. So having heard that, counsel, we have a, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? That's unanimous and so ordered. Thank you. Item C, ordinance 202515 to amend Greenwood County zoning map as and if amended so that one parcel of land totaling approximately 195.45 acres on Nation Road, Greenwood County, changes from agricultural to forested agricultural. Ms. Carol.
Ms. Karen, the proposed owners of the property, they're looking to purchase it, wanting to create a place where they could have reserve, reserve for wild animals, not wild animals, but for natural animals. They've got raccoons, they've got birds, that kind of thing. So nothing, nothing major. But they also want to build a house there. They did come and meet with me after we had second reading with concerns that the requirement, minimum requirement FA is five acres. We went back and looked, and if you read the FA district, there is an option, option for family subdivisions where they can cut out acre lots for family members if they, they develop that way, which would suit their needs. They want to be able to have residential space for their children and other relatives that want to live there.
But family owned.
And family owned. And that's the requirement under FA.
Yes, ma'am.
And Planning, Planning Commission recommended approval, and staff recommended approval as well.
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Carol. Counsel, you've heard the excellent motions, third and final, final reading. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I offer you a motion to approve.
Ms. Bishop, motion?
Second.
Second by the vice chairman. All in favor? That's unanimous and so ordered. Thank you. Ordinance 2020, 202516 will amend Greenwood County zoning ordinances as it pertains to the regulation standards related to chickens and poultry in the residential districts. Ms. Carol.
Mr. Chairman, this came out of community support. We had a number of residents in the county who would like to keep chickens, and when they would call to find out what the requirements were in the residential districts, we had to tell them that they had to have at least three acres. We looked at the ordinance that the city has used for quite some time and found that there were no problems with it. So we went back and discussed how we should look at this. All of the agricultural districts allow it by right anyway, but the residential districts were the main problem. R1 has a minimum lot size of 15,000 square feet. R2 has a minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet. R3 has a minimum lot size of about 7,000 square feet and change. So those were the three we addressed to, to allow people to have the same as in the city. Up to six hands, no roosters, to be kept in the backyard, no free range. And I think you got some clarification on this one?
It's, it's the same.
Just the technical stuff.
It's the same idea, just technical edits, no substance.
Counsel, I hope you recognize what a good job I did in not laughing right before we started. Mr. Chairman, I offer you a motion to approve.
I say again.
Have a motion by Ms. Temple, and second by Ms. Bishop. All in favor? And that ends the great chicken debate. Thank you very much. We will move, I'm sorry, give me a second. We'll move now into public, into a public hearing. Ordinance 202517. Well, first, I will, I will entertain a motion that we please move into a public hearing.
So.
I'm getting ahead of myself tonight. Have a motion by Ms. Temple, and second by Ms. Bishop. All, I'm sorry, by Ms. Griffin. All in favor? All in favor? Okay, we're now in public hearing. Ordinance 202517, creating special purpose tax district for the Ferncliff subdivision to accomplish resident drainage improvements and other matters related there, too. Ms. Penny.
This remains the same as it did at first and second reading. It is necessary, and it seems apparent that it is necessary to the neighbors in this community to have this designation, and because they have such, they have hit the 75% bar in both respects, that they do not have to have a special election, and under state law and county council policy, they may by this ordinance create the Ferncliff Special Tax District.
Thank you, ma'am. Now, in public hearing, we will hear from anyone who is here that would like to speak in favor of this action. Mr. Town, come forward, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Danny Towne. I'm the co-president of the Ferncliff Homeowners Association. And as you know, during Hurricane, our dam got taken out on the backside, and since then, with all the rain we've had, we have a mess. And, you know, estimates started out at 200,000, and they've crept up to almost a million. So this special tax district will help us receive funds to help pay an SBA loan that we're going to have to get to fix this problem, which, like I said, stands anywhere from a half a million to a million dollars. And the road is slowly eroding after each rainstorm, and I personally spent almost $27,000 on a commercial pump to keep our water levels down and keep from going through the drains basin and eroding the pond. So, you know, like I told you earlier, Danny has, y'all all have been a tremendous help, and the attorney, Count Carson, has been wonderful, and so has Toby, helping me figure out how to manage this. And I was able to obtain enough signatures to meet the 75% threshold to keep that hopefully, well, two things. Number one, to speed up the process, number two, to eliminate a special election. So any questions for me?
Counsel? Danny, again, I thanked you before, and I'll thank you again. You've done great work for your community. I'm going to say again that I think this is exactly what special purpose tax districts were designed to do. So thank you for kind words, but thank you also for your diligence in doing this. Counsel, any comments or questions?
Yes, Ms. Chairman. Thank you. The only question I have, and I'm certainly not opposed to this, I understand your situation, but just want to make sure we're all on the same page. I noticed that a lot of the signatures are from the same address. So if I understand this correctly, if I was a single person and I lived in there and I was opposed to it, but my neighbor was married, they would have two votes to my one?
No, no, sir. So.
Go ahead.
So, my wife and I both own that property together. We're both on a deed. Any property that both individuals are on a deed, both individuals have to sign it. That's only one vote.
And so we met the 75% with the one vote, is what you're saying?
Well, if the two people sign it, it's one vote. Yes, sir.
Right, so it's based on ownership, and it's based on value, and so, you know, in discussions, it seemed prudent to have all of the owners of a property sign so that there could be no question about whether that property counted for each of the 75% thresholds.
Exactly. And multiple persons own multiple lots, and the folks, the 11 that did not sign, they're, a lot of them are still, they're willing FEMA to pay for this. Instead of us having to pay for this through an SBA loan, they're looking for FEMA, they're looking for grants from USDA, FEMA, and so forth, and they're basically, please, somebody else pay for this instead of us having to pay for it. We never, in our, you know, 22 years we've lived there, thought this would ever happen.
I just want to make sure, I do know there were some folks that did not sign on.
You're correct.
I just want to make sure that the voting, the 75%, meets our statute even though they're both in the same household.
That's correct.
Just want to make sure.
Yeah. And we thoroughly went through that, and my attorney even had the assessor's office send me a list of every single property with the names on the deeds and the assessed value. So to meet 75, 75, we had to have the number, same number of signatures, but also the assessed value. Well, there's three houses out there that have assessed values of $9,000 because our houses were built mid-year of last year, and these would probably be, instead of $9,500 to $9,800 assessed values, would be in the $35,000, $40,000 assessed value.
Only thing I want to make sure that if this is legally challenged, we're covered.
We are.
That's all.
We.
I believe we are.
That's what I want to hear. If we're legally challenged, are we covered?
Yeah.
I believe we are.
Thank you.
I would think so.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Counsel? Thank you, Danny.
Well, thank you. Thank you guys for that. And thank you to Danny. And Robbie. Robbie was one, I actually called you first, then Robbie, and then kind of figured out Danny's my councilperson.
Is your guy?
Yeah, he's my guy. He's been our guy. And he's a great guy. But Robbie kind of directed me in initially, and then I got in touch with Mr. Chapel, and he has been a wealth of help, and so has Carson P. So, thank you. Anything else?
Chat's in the mail, Danny. Thank you.
No, I always take cash. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Danny.
Is there anyone else that would like to come forward and speak in favor of this ordinance? Seeing none, is there anyone here that would like to speak in opposition of this ordinance? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion, please, as we close the public hearing.
Full move.
Second.
Have a motion by Ms. Templeton, second by Ms. Griffin. All in favor? Public hearing is closed. Counsel, having heard. Mr. Chairman, since this is in my district, I will offer you a motion to approve.
I say.
Motion to approve by Vice Chairman, second by Ms. Bishop. Any comment or discussion before we vote? All in favor? That's so ordered, unanimous, thank you. We'll now enter into new business portion of our meeting. Item A is consideration to approve the purchase of vehicles from the incentive funds and variance of our procurement policy. Our county treasurer, Ms. Stephanie Dorn, is coming to us live from somewhere tonight. I'm not in that. Part sun now.
I'm not in part sun, no. I'm in Washington DC, so we're looking for all the money.
Again, part sun now.
All right, so this particular situation is a little bit unusual. Chastity Copeland is our elected clerk of court, and she has a set of incentive funds that are provided to us, or to her through the Department of Social Services related to activities that the clerk of court's office handles in relation to child support situations. And those funds have certain requirements of use, and one of the things is that those funds have to be expended following the county procurement. Chastity is wanting to purchase a vehicle, and so initially, she went out and obtained a bid, obtained a quote from Love Auto, and it was for about $54,000. Because it was over $50,000, she then had to go back to the procurement policy, which requires an RFP to be done. So she worked with Anita, our procurement director, and put out the RFP, and we received one submission from the RFP, and it was for just over $67,000 from Finley Logistics out of Daniel Island. We're not really sure why Love didn't participate in the RFP. We think maybe because they had already provided a quote, they didn't think that they needed to. And so normally, our policy is that if we put out an RFP, then we would take the lowest bid, but in this situation, we didn't actually receive that quote through the RFP process. So what we're asking you is kind of two-part. One, because this is over $50,000, the procurement policy requires that we bring it to you to be approved because it was not a budgeted item. And the second piece of this is we're asking you to allow a variance in the procurement policy so that we can accept the quote of $54,000, which is going to save almost $14,000 on the purchase price of this vehicle. And I can't say to the audience, but I believe Chastity, I know she planned to be there, and I'm sure she'll be glad to answer any questions that I can't answer for you.
Yeah, Chastity, come up if you're real quick. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Any question, what questions do you have? I mean, she really laid it out. I want you to understand one thing about this money. This isn't Greenwood County money. This can only be used by my child support office for child support purposes. And the car that we're buying is, that we're planning to buy is to serve child support papers, the sheriff's office, you know, the deputies don't have yet, to serve the papers. It's not something they can do, or I can do anything with, drive it home, you know, anything like that, strictly for child support use.
So the vehicle, your vehicle, was basically assigned through the sheriff's office?
Yes.
All right. And I'm assuming, price of that vehicle, is that, does that come through the state contract like when we purchased vehicles for the sheriff's department?
Well, Love Chevrolet is a company that we often do get vehicles off of state contracts, so this is probably their state contract price.
They even have it on your pricing for state contract.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I offer you a motion to approve.
I will second that motion.
A motion by Ms. Bishop, a second by Mr. Allison. Any comments or questions further, counsel? If not, all in favor? That's unanimous and so ordered. Thank you, counsel. Item B.
Thank you.
Item B is consideration for Greenwood County to complete the acquisition and closure process with the South Carolina DOT for Washington Street. Our county engineer, Mr. Templeton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One thing I realized when I was looking at the agenda, I made a mistake in my agenda request, it's actually Washington Avenue, so I obviously committed that wrong, but it's the same one we talked about before. This is a segment between, I guess, right over there, between, kind of elaborate property and Park Plaza property. I came to talk to you back in May, the request was to move forward this process, and the first step was to go to the city, because they had first right refusal. We called to the city, the city is relinquished that first right refusal, and we're wanting to move forward the next step, go through the state, go through the closure process, and basically the acquisition and closure process. So we're looking for approval tonight to do that.
Mr. Chairman, I thought we had done that at the meeting, we discussed it before, but obviously not, so I'm going to make a motion.
We did discuss.
Proceed.
We did discuss.
I say you can see.
Well. So we're clear on that then? You have a motion, a second by Ms. Bishop? Any further questions or comments? All in favor is presented. And that's unanimous and so ordered. Thank you. Item C, consideration of the approval to award the contract for the 2025 local paving project to Satterfield Construction. Go ahead, Brett.
Thank you, sir. Every year we do a local paving project. This year, we put it out for bid, received two bids, one from Park Lot Pro that is still over $1.2 million, we received one from Satterfield at $982,000 roughly. We are asking tonight to approve going forward to Satterfield Construction and awarding that contract and giving the county manager the authority to negotiate our terms and to approve the contract.
Counsel, you've heard this presented by Ms. Templeton. What's your pleasure?
Full move, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Ms. Allison, second by Ms. Bishop. Any comments or questions before we vote? All in favor is presented. That's unanimous and so ordered. Thank you. Thank you. Item D, the consideration of the purchase of a bulldozer for Public Works Solid Waste Disposal Department. Mr. Rob Russian from Public Works, our Public Works Director.
As our treasurer agreed, today is the very first day of our new budget, and as being the very first day, I'd like to spend some of that budget money really quickly.
So are you on budget, Mr. Russian?
We are absolutely on budget on the first day of the budget. I don't think I've spent anything yet, but we are asking to spend quite a bit of money on the first day. Our landfill is in desperate need of a dozer. We do have funds, budget for fiscal year '26 for this purchase. Purchasing policy allows for purchasing from state contracts under certain requirements. We are required to contact local vendors. There are no local vendors in Greenwood County that could fulfill this purchase. We're also required to get a couple additional quotes in addition to the state contract price. We went and bid that. Currently, we are running Komatsu and Caterpillar dozers out at the landfill. We received quotes from both those through Linder and Blanchard. But on state contract, Dobbs Equipment has a John Deere dozer on state contract for significantly less price, as you can see in the bid tabulation there, for a price of $493,755.03. That's all in freight included. The other two quotes you had listed there did not include freight. We didn't feel the need to get the freight quotes after having such a little bid from Dobbs on the state contract. As part of our purchasing procedure, we are required to come through counsel whenever we do a state contract purchase. That's why I'm here tonight for your approval for this purchase in the formal range. There is one on the agenda request under funding factors that says total cost will be taken from fiscal year '25 budget funds. That is incorrect. It's fiscal year '26 budget funds, of which we're in the first day. I can take any questions you might have.
Thank you, Rob, for that correction. Counsel, having heard that, a motion from Rob, any?
Offer you a motion to approve.
Second by Ms. Allison, second by Ms. Bishop. Any comments or questions before we vote? All in favor is presented. That's unanimous and so ordered. Thank you very much. Item E, consideration of disposal of Public Works equipment pursuant to Greenwood County procurement policy 10.4.
Rob? So every couple of years, the county disposes of equipment and vehicles through an auction, and we are due to have another auction. We have produced a list of equipment and vehicles for that auction, as you so have. Over the last year or so, we did receive some requests about getting access to that equipment before the auction. In your agenda request, I mentioned both requests from County '96 and Toro's. Toro's has since, since the agenda was published, taken back their request, they're going to go in a different direction. So tonight, we're only talking about municipalities. In the past, we have not given municipalities any access to the auction items prior to the auction. We are asking counsel to consider that tonight. Staff recommendation here is to give the county manager authority to receive some sealed bids, contact each of the municipalities within Greenwood County, ask if they're interested in any of the items on the auction list, then receive sealed bids on a certain day and time to kind of give that preference before the equipment would go to auction. I can take any questions or anything else you might have.
Well, thank you, Rob, and I think it's important for the public to know that we have vetted this to assure that it is in compliance through our attorney with our existing ordinance. And I think that Mr. Allison made a great point in our discussions when he said that in helping our municipalities, who are also a part of our county, we kind of helped our county, too. in helping our municipalities, who are also a part of our county, we kind of help our county too. So I fully support this. Any, first, let me entertain a motion. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
I'll offer your motion.
I have a motion by Vice Chairman, seconded by Miss Bishop. Oh, sorry. Seconded by Miss Griffin. I'm sure maybe some comment on this, counsel?
Yes, I will, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Mr. Russian, thanks for bringing that to our attention. I agree with Mr. Allison's statements earlier that anytime we can help out our communities and municipalities, I think we should do so because they are, in fact, county taxpayers in addition to town or municipal taxpayers. And I would probably like to see us, in the future, allow a list, maybe go out to these entities prior to. They may be in need of some equipment, and it might be best for them to look at the used route versus having them purchase new. So appreciate our willingness here at Public Works to work with these entities, and I'd just like to see it move forward.
Anything else, counsel? We have a motion, seconded, all in favor. That's so ordered. Thank you, Rob.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Russian. Item F is a consideration of the assignment of marketing rights and option agreements by Bishop Greenwood to Greenwood County for Project Keen Fisher. Economic Development Director, Mr. James Bateman.
Good evening, Chairman, and members of the council. We are asking for county council's approval of the concept of the assignment from Bishop Greenwood to Greenwood County for Project Keen Fisher and authorize staff to negotiate the form of that assignment.
I'll offer you that motion, Mr. Chairman.
I say.
We have a motion by Mr. Templeton, seconded by Miss Bishop. We've had discussion on this topic. Counsel, any comments or questions before we vote? Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you, James. Therefore, we bat. First reading, we'll move to first reading now, first reading entitled only. Item G, ordinance twenty twenty-five eighteen to amend Greenwood County zoning map as and if amended so that one parcel of land totaling approximately point seven-two acres at one oh-two Fort Drive, Greenwood County, South Carolina, changes from R-one single-family residential to C-two general commercial. Ms. Coleman, you've talked about this already.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, the only thing I would point out on this one is that I did look at the distance from this parcel where it's residential to where you see the first commercial properties. To the north of first commercial properties is the church and the school. It's over six hundred feet away. To the south, almost two thousand feet, to get down to the intersection at Deadpool Road West. That tells you that everything out there is primarily residential.
Speaking first reading entitled only. Item H, ordinance twenty twenty-five nineteen to amend Greenwood County zoning map as and if amended so that one parcel of land totaling approximately point nine-zero acres at thirty-six twenty-three Tillman Territory Road, Greenwood County, changes from RDD Rural Development District to Ag-one agriculture. Ms. Carol.
Mr. Chairman, this property is already substandard for the district. It's nine tenths of an acre, and family members, where you can see kind of a flat lot where they've already cut part of the property off. The family member in the rear wanted to gain more of the property in the front, which would make it even more substandard, hence the request to go to AG-one. There are a lot of concerns with this, that property out there does not have access to sewer. So they've got septic tanks, if they cut more of the property off, I can't be sure that the septic system would be intact. It's inconsistent, and it would be considered spot zoning, in my opinion.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Did it know before the zoning board?
It did.
And they, their recommendation?
They recommended it denied, staff recommended it denied as well.
Item I, ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twenty to amend Greenwood County zoning map as and if amended so that one parcel of land totaling approximately point four-eight acres at three oh-seven Lake Forest Drive, Greenwood County, changes from R-one single-family residential to R-four two-family residential. Ms. Carol.
Mr. Chairman, this one is to keep it residential, but the people who purchased the property were hoping to subdivide it and have smaller lots for more dwelling units. The committee came out against it, staff did not support it, primarily because if, again, we're on septic systems in that area and you reduce the lot size even more, you're running into problems with that.
Thank you, ma'am. Item J, ordinance twenty twenty-five twenty-one to amend Greenwood County zoning map as and if amended so that one parcel of land totaling approximately two point eight-eight acres at four twenty-two Andrews Chapel Road, Greenwood County, changes from RDD Rural Development District to R-four two-family residential. Now, Carol, there's been a change here, I think you said.
Yes, sir. We spoke about this briefly before the meeting tonight. So I was made aware after the fact that applicant could not be at the meeting because he was called out of town. The request on the application was for R-four, which is two-family residential. This is in another area, rural area of the county, where we count on wells and septic tanks. They had no intention of going to lots that small. They've got almost three acres, and he was hoping that it could split it up to two, possibly three lots in there. And we were hoping possibly to remand it back to Planning Commission. They didn't intend for it to be R-four, they were asking for R-one.
Okay, and this is in my district. I'm familiar with the property, and I do think we need to give them a fair hearing. I think to remand it back, if counsel, if it's the will of counsel, would be the thing to do. So I guess we'll take that up in our next meeting, but I hope that we can do that.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Counsel, we have, I don't think we have any further pending items. Is Smackin' Fire, do we have anything pending? Okay, having heard none, we'll move into District Courts now. Ms. Griffin, District One.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to say good evening to each and every one of you. Thank you for attending tonight. I would like to say happy new month to you, and also wish you all a very happy Fourth of July. Praying that you all will be safe. And also, would like to give a big get-rod shout-out to Sister Erica Brown, who was the bus driver for Burton Center today. Some of you all may not have seen the fire that the bus caught fire. But she was able to get herself and eight consumers off the bus without anyone being hurt. But we're asking you that you would just keep her and them in prayer because that had to be a very frightening moment for them all. So if you would, please just keep them in your prayers. We thank you for all that you do for Greenwood County, and we are just thankful that we're able to serve a county that has individuals that care and look out for one another. So ends my report.
Thank you, Ms. Griffin. Mr. Allison, District Two.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To begin my report tonight, I had had some conversations earlier with Mr. Rushton over our Public Works. I have gotten several calls concerning our leaf and limb pickup that, you know, they were scheduled to come and pick up, and they didn't, you know, the county was not able to come and show up and pick the limbs up in the areas at the designated times they were supposed to be there. So they called questioning. I have told, you know, several of them that due to the hurricane, we are still playing kind of catch-up from that. And then, you know, just a few weeks ago, on Saturday, we had another terrible storm that a lot of trees went down again. So, Mr. Chairman, if you would allow me, I would like to ask Mr. Rushton kind of where we're at with our leaf and limb and some of our road. You know, they scrape roads, and just to see kind of, are we getting back on schedule again? And I'm going to make a comment here now that may not be voted off of counsel, but I had a life before counsel, if I do, I still have a life. But I really think it's time that Greenwood County looks at that leaf and limb program. If I'm not mistaken, I think we're the only county in the state of South Carolina that picks up leaves and limbs. I was told that at one time, and I'd like to know if that's true. The city, that I've talked with several counties at our conferences and things, and they like Yondu Boy. And then what shocked me is how expensive it is to do this. So I'm saying to the council, I'm not saying eliminate it, but I do think it's time we start looking at the cost of it, the efficiency of it, and whether or not we really want to take a good look at this program that we offer that no other county in the state of South Carolina. Is that correct?
I believe it is correct, and I've come across another county who offers leaf and limb service outside of Incorporated gas.
Outside of Incorporated. But anyways, appreciate you coming, appreciate you willing to talk about this. I'm just being honest with you. I've gotten a lot, I say a lot of calls. Toby always challenged me when I say a lot of calls. But I've gotten several calls, people like, are you back on track? When are they going to pick up limbs? They keep telling me the truck's broken before we're up and they can't come pick the limbs up. So can you just kind of share with us kind of where we're at with that for the public?
So a couple of things. We started back with our normal leaf and limb pickup at the beginning of April. What normally takes us a month schedule to go through the entire county, all of the stuff took us two months to go through. We've had a variety of issues. One is volume. We just, people continue to put stuff out there from the storm, they continue to clean up. We've had a couple other small storms since then. The volume that's out there is great. What the contractor didn't pick up, the DOT didn't pick up, we're out there trying to pick up now. The piles are very large, just, and we're only getting what our policy allows. So it took us two months to go through what would be normal one-month schedule. We're in the second cycle now, and we, again, are two weeks behind after one month into the second cycle. So it's probably going to take us almost two months to get through the second cycle. So we ask people to be patient when they call in. We've had a variety of issues. We've had terrible truck issues the last month. We have four leaf and limb trucks. On some days, we've only had one operating. We do have one in the budget at least for this year. I was going to ask our treasurer to confirm that, but I'm just, first day of the budget year, I'm still going through that, but I believe we are purchasing a new one this year. Our next newest one is a twenty-seventeen. So our newest one is eight years old. It's just, we're back behind. Individuals, we can, you know, there's, each individual might have a certain circumstance, but in general, we're behind. We've had that truck issues. I'm glad that you say that. Last time, when I first came up Public Works, it's almost five years ago now, I proposed to counsel in a budget session to eliminate our leaf and limb program. Operating expenses for the program is two hundred forty-four thousand dollars a year that we could eliminate almost that entire cost. That's not including capital costs. A truck roughly costs two hundred twenty-five thousand dollars, and we need to buy a truck once about every five years or so. So that's the number, two hundred forty-four thousand we could eliminate from the budget. Now, I would say that we, that department, the two and a half employees in that department do do some other things other than just curbside pickup. We would need to figure out how we perform those other duties. For instance, on Mondays, they typically go to our convenience centers, unload the convenience centers. We still need to perform that part of it, even if we drop the curbside service. But you are looking somewhere in the area of anywhere to one hundred fifty to two hundred forty-five thousand dollars that we could eliminate from the budget if we eliminated that service. It is a typical city-type service we offer in the county. The last issue, just want to address quickly, is, and again, we're too late for this budget, but again, as we go forward, it's certainly something that we could look at if counsel does. At that time, when I brought it up previously, I really had no support on counsel, so I dropped it. I think I brought it up the next budget cycle quickly, and it quickly got extinguished. I have a broad look sense. Last thing, our road department, when it comes to scraping roads, that's our road department. Obviously, our road department, we're still out there chasing some of the big debris from the lean. We have gotten probably eighty percent of that list done. They're still working on some of that. We do have some vacancy issues in the road department now. The department's, our department of fifteen, I think we have ten employees in that department right now. We're on the verge of hiring a couple more people, I think, two in the next couple of weeks. I'll say a third one, but we'll work on those issues there. We did lose motor grader operators in the last year, specifically someone who'd been with us quite a long time. So getting to those dirt roads, having a motor grader operator in availability has been a real issue. We've hit some spot areas with backhoe, stuff like that, but we are way behind on our hundred miles, hundred and ten miles of dirt road that we maintain and trying to get it scraped. So again, it's a bunch of different issues. We try to relay that as people call in. Specific roads might have specific issues of why we hadn't got to them or why we had, but in general, that's the explanation for those. And we are getting those same calls. We try to handle them on a case-by-case basis. There are some people now, and I will tell you, the hurricane brought a bunch, whole bunch more users of our leaf and limb service, and some of them aren't necessarily used to having to wait up to a month to have something picked up. They called in today, expected to be picked up by the end of the week. Even when we're on schedule, that's not what our normal service time is. So I know that we've had several, just in the last couple of weeks, who've been very upset that, I just called in this last week and it hasn't been picked up yet. We've gotten rash of those lately. So one subdivision you mentioned, we've had two or three people in that particular subdivision. Prior to the storm, we always came the same week of the month, and then we had it come the same week of the month, so they've been a little bit upset with that schedule being off like it is.
I think, Rob, you and I talked about this, and I think as councilmembers, we all try to probably educate in this regard. But I think a lot of people just don't realize we work it in a circuit.
We do.
Circuit routes, and I think people think you just call it, pick it up next day, and that really is not feasible. Thank you for that question, Miss Allison. Yeah, that was good information.
All right.
Hope you don't get fired.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that other, and I hope everyone has a safe and wonderful Fourth of July. That is my report.
Thank you, Miss Allison. Miss Bishop, get your free.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank everybody for coming. Thank you to the Roots for coming. Thank you, Mr. Coleman. We appreciate you guys for coming. You have no need to be nervous. We are just people. We're here to serve you. And so I just say to everybody, blessed evening, okay? That is my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. District Four, Ms. Miller.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I do want to let everybody know that I attended the Bishop and Mason's Struggle Site Ribbon Cutting. It was held on June twenty. And our own Councilwoman Bishop was there as a guest speaker, I might add. She did not want to say that, I guess, but I did a wonderful job representing county council there. It is a beautiful campus, and if you haven't been, that was my first visit, and I really enjoyed it. So please, please go visit that wonderful attraction here in Greenwood. Reminder that Amber, up here, our little coordinator, has scheduled my District Four pickup. So I've got everybody's names over here, and if you don't live in the district, you can sign up to pick up litter in our district. I will be on Saturday, July the twenty-sixth. So I will remind you again about that as well. And then finally, I would like to say that since I'm going to piggyback off Mr. Allison, if we're going to be visiting leaf and limb, I would like for us to consider visiting, revisiting the recycling program as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller.
Vice Chairman, District Five. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I just want to say it's been nice serving with you, Mr. Allison. Just kidding. Attended this past weekend, just briefly for family reasons, but I did attend the Festival of Stars on Saturday night, just in time to get boiled peanuts, barbecue, and listen to ninety-six's own Chris Turner for a set. So enjoyable, but very, very hot. Also, I'm just proud that I live in a community like ninety-six, where I can sit on my front porch and see the awesome job of fireworks that were displayed. They did an outstanding job. And I'm thankful to all the volunteers and the workers and the planners and the employees of town of ninety-six and everyone that contributed to make it a success. We talked about constituent calls, and I'm glad to hear that others are getting those. I thought it was Call Dang Month in June, but I'm glad everyone else is participating. But I also did a little research, and Miss Abby can correct me on this, but on the website, one of the things is report a code violation, in case you don't realize that. There's a little button you can click on, and I think that would be great for people to utilize that. So that way, we'd have a written record, right, Ms. Attorney? And be able to follow up on it that way. It is July fourth, and we're celebrating the independence of our country. Let's not forget, you know, all- Let's not forget, you know, all those who sacrificed all their time and all that brought us to that point and our forefathers for all that they did to get us there. So enjoy your Fourth, but let's also enjoy our freedom. Be safe and enjoy. And as always, only in my report with Bible verse, Proverbs 1532 says, "Those who disregard discipline despise themselves, but the one who heeds correction gains understanding." That ends my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. President. District 6, Mr. Temple.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Real quick, I want to thank Rob for assisting me with an issue I had in my district today. He did so very quickly and I appreciate it. I do want everybody to celebrate our freedoms and independence that we have in the greatest country in the world. Be safe, enjoy your families. I saw the fire today from my office and it was large and it happened quickly, but the fire department response was also quick and they got a lot of trucks out there in a big hurry. And on that note, I think we're all aware of what happened in Idaho last week, so I just want to take this time to thank our first responders, our sheriff's deputies, our fire department guys, because they put their life on line every day when they answer a call and you never know what you're gonna get. So I want to appreciate their service. And then lastly, the reason Stephanie wasn't here is because she's educating folks all over the country about, you know, what she, representing Greenwood County on a national stage, focused on financial reporting and I don't think anybody does it better than Dr. Dorn. So that's, I'm glad she's representing us and I know she's doing a fantastic job. That ends my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Well, thank you all for being here tonight. I'm gonna keep it very brief because we've been here for a while, but I do want to mention also Lieutenant O'Mack and Captain Smith, I really appreciate the sheriff's department being here for county council meetings, because there are so many things that kind of, I think, transcend the work of the sheriff's department. So I really like it and appreciate it when you guys are here just to show interest in what's going on with county government. And I want to recognize our staff, you know, we've just come out of the budget session. I spoke about this a couple of weeks ago and all that that entails, you just do great work. So I hope that at the end of the week, that you enjoy the holiday, that you have a great, safe Fourth of July celebration. Unfortunately, I will be continuing to make repairs from the flood of my home, so it's probably not gonna be my great Fourth of July. But again, thank you all for your interest in Greenwood County and thank you for being here tonight. God bless you all. That ends our meeting. Oh, excuse me. Yeah. Madam Attorney, you don't have anything else? Susan? I'm sorry.
No, we're fine.
The manager being Hawaii, I guess.
Yeah.
Oh, you're done? Everybody? Yes. Let's go. Bye.